All right. All right, five, six after we'll go ahead and get rolling. Thanks, everybody for joining us. Looks like we have relatively light attendance. Maybe some other people dropping in as we go along, but we'll do a general roll call. And and get meeting going. My name is Kelly Sheen. I'm the district manager for the Trinity County Resource Conservation District. And co facilitator for the collaborative group.
All right. Good morning, everyone. My name is Jim Spear, co facilitator for the Trinity Collaborative.
Good morning, everyone. Sarah Icarage, District Ranger for the National Recreation Area of the Chassata Trinity.
Okay, and that's all we have in the room so far. So on Zoom, I see Arnold Whitridge.
Hello, good morning.
Morning Larry Glass.
Morning.
I see Susan and Joseph Bauer.
Present.
Hi.
Jerry Cousins.
Good morning, everybody.
Carol Fall.
Morning.
Morning Kenneth Baldwin. Are you back? Are you back in the States or back back home?
Yes, I am. After a month of traveling to the Southwest on a great trip.
Awesome. Well, welcome back. Thanks for joining us this morning. Tara Jones with the Chassata Trinity.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning Tara.
Morning.
Bob Doucette with the wildfire crisis strategy.
Morning, everybody.
Morning, Bob. Thanks for joining us. And Randy Paris with Watershed Center.
Good morning, everybody. Hope you're having a good day.
Thank you.
You are so good. I think that is everybody unless I missed anybody. That's everybody that I see on. I think you got them all. Yes. Okay. Good.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. And once again, good morning, everyone. Good to see everybody. We will start with an agenda check. Any adjustments that we need to make to accommodate anybody's schedule today? Anything we want to move around or?
I did get a message from BLM from Jen Mata that she is unable to attend today, but that Alden Neal, her second in command at the Redding Field Office will be joining us, but he had a conflict from 10 to 11, so will be joining us after 11. They're updates to 11:30 today.
All right, very good. Any other adjustments that we need to make on the agenda? Not seeing any. We will go with what we got. All right, collective memory minutes. Any any questions or corrections or edits we need to be made aware of?
Those are too long to read.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna we're gonna work on that, Earl. Not seeing any. Okay. Up next, facilitation team funding for the facilitation team. I think Kelly's gonna lead that discussion for us.
Yeah, it's it's real, real brief. We had our agreement executed as of June 20. And it's approximately five years of funding, so we're all good with regard to that. So thank you very much for service, for getting that through and for grants and agreements for actually getting it over the finish line. So we're glad to be back in business.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Larry.
I I just would like to make, I'm glad you guys got the funding. I'm glad we got the funding. I mean, that's great that we can continue on. Please, a request, if we could get these agendas out a little over a week before the meeting would be ideal, so people can arrange their schedules around us. I think that may be why we have light attendance today. It's because the agenda came out so late.
I have been endeavoring to try to get that together. I agree with you 100% Larry, and that will be my that will be my goal for sure, to have it at least a week in advance. So thank you for that comment. I saw another hand.
I got I had one. I'm not sure where the hand went, but um, so I too am really glad the funding came through, but I just want to understand expectations. The funding was for four years and Jim's contract is for annually. Is that right?
The contract is, I mean, the agreement itself is is five years. It's roughly the amount of funding that we need for probably a and I don't know that it'll cover the full, just based at the at the kind of level that we're at right now of funding that we we actually utilize. It should be about close to that, but maybe not quite the full five years. But yeah, we annually update our agreement with Jim, which is just standard practice for most of our contracts.
Right. So last year Jim was funded for facilitating the meetings and going on the field trips. And then he got involved in the camera work and that kind of, from what I understand, kind of skewed the whole budget. So I'm just wondering what we can expect as far as in the coming year, what work? How much work can you assign to Jim and how much work will Jim be wanting to do?
Well, I'll speak to the the funding part of it. Due to that sort of increase, the, you know, the increased number of field trips, all that, we we increased his level of funding to, I think, an appropriate level to be able to handle all of that. So I'm not really too worried about that piece. And that was built into the budget for this agreement. Correct. Yeah.
So I I guess I just want to go a little further. So what happens if a new project comes up that the facilitator would need to take care of? Is there funding to add on for anything new? Such as an example, the cameras project that came up last year?
It it should be at a level that would handle that.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're we're definitely, you know, at present, particularly given the fact that there wasn't funding for the first six months. We're kind of ahead of schedule, Jerry. So we've got a little slack there to work with. If something does develop that would require, you know, additional time from me or again, I'm always available. Kelly and I are kind of in in ongoing conversation, right, about what additional help I might be able to provide, given he's got a full plate. He's got a lot going on. So if there are things that he he believes that I can assist with, he's he's not been bashful about asking for my assistance. So that's kind of an ongoing conversation we have.
Yeah, and we have some flexibility in the funding also that we just generally with agreements like this with our federal partners, there's usually about a 10% play. You know, so if we set a certain budget, we have about 10% that we can adjust that on the on the budget, which will make it which gives us that kind of flexibility. So
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right, bet. Any other questions on facilitation team funding? Don't see any hands, so we will move on. So public input, any members of the public joining us today? Don't see any. Okay. Couple of things that I came across in in reading the lengthy minutes. One was kind of tied to our meeting structure. So as you may recall at our last meeting, there was a very positive discussion surrounding kind of a program of work meeting that Tara had facilitated and requested in lieu of one of the field trips. And in that discussion, if you read through the minutes, there seemed to be some indication of a desire to maybe have that as kind of a regular scheduled type of meetings. I just wanted to circle back. It wasn't clear to me in the minutes kind of how we wanted to go forward. Is that something we want to kind of schedule on an annual basis? Or is that just kind of an ad hoc? As needed. But overall, it seemed like a very positive time and and everyone seemed to value the opportunity to get a little more in depth in terms of for service program of work. So what what is your pleasure? Do we want that to be an ad hoc just on an as needed basis? Or do we want that to be something we actually kind of put into the schedule and and ensure it happens? Tara, you got any thoughts on that?
Um, I I know Larry got his hand up. I think that it was it was a good meeting. I appreciated being able to take the time to really dig into kind of where we think we're going and get your get the input from the group in real time. As as I stated before, sometimes in these meetings, I have so many updates and so many things to get through. I feel like we spend a preponderance of the meeting dealing with TRMU and South Fork issues. So I I would certainly be open to that. I would ask that we get it scheduled because otherwise it's it's one more thing for me to try to remember to try to get on a calendar, whereas if we get them scheduled, it's it's easier for me to to hit the target there.
Very good. Appreciate it. Larry?
Well, I just wanted to refresh your memory. This was a plug in because we had a canceled field trip. And it was a great opportunity for Tara to be able to tell us what she was up to. So I think that that's how that all came to pass. Also, because you know, she felt, I guess, that she was dominating the meetings. I didn't feel that way, but that's how she felt it. So and having a standalone meeting where we just talked about all the things that she had in the planning hopper seemed like it made sense. So I agree that it's it's worth having the meetings on some kind of semi regular basis, but it was good to to have something to plug in when there when a field trip got canceled, because that's going to happen too. Field trips are going to get canceled. So and I think Six Rivers needs to afford us with the same opportunity as well.
Very good. So it seems like there is support to kind of schedule a program of work type meeting and maybe the opportunity to use field trip time slots, especially in the winter, that seems to be the timeframe that typically gets questionable relative to field trips. So that seemed like something we can work with. Maybe look at kind of that November through February, March kind of timeframe and maybe identify one of those months as where we would kind of go with a program of work type meeting as in lieu of a field trip. Share, yep, got thumbs up and we got Tara shaking her head. Anybody else want to?
It sounds like a really good plan.
Very good, Jerry. Appreciate it. Okay, don't see any other hands up or comments, so we will we will run with that. Maybe we'll reach out to you, Tara, and just see maybe what month you would prefer. And maybe we'll check in with Six Rivers as well. So we'll we'll try to get that dialed in and get it scheduled. So something, you know, we get on the calendar and everyone understands when it's coming.
I think it would be great if you guys, you know, January, February make a lot of sense to me just because whichever one falls in with the field trip. It's it's pretty bitterly cold generally around those times. And goodness knows, we take this group out, we can make it snow. So they want to pick one of those if it seems like that makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Good suggestions.
Hey Tara, when do you schedule your in-house program of work meetings? When you kind of develop what you're going to be doing the next year? What's your schedule of that?
We just went through our five-year program of work. Just got that kind of drafted out recently as a forest. Each of us worked on ours. So you know, with the way the field season is, Jerry, I think that and because we're planning far enough out in advance now, we're we're going to be receptive to any to any input. If we meet in January, nothing will be, you know, locked in by any means. So we generally do it in the spring, I would say, so that we can be ready to to update it in the summer like we like we just finished doing our five-year program of work. So seems like January or February could could work. Sarah, what do you think?
Very good. Yeah, that's just wanted to know. Thanks.
No, I was gonna check in. Sarah, does that make sense to you? Does that seem to align about right?
I think that makes a lot of sense, Tara. I'm I'm good with that approach.
Very good. Anybody else? All right, not seeing any. Up next. Larry had posed a question to Tara last meeting regarding kind of communications from folks who are monitoring the wildfire cameras to kind of the lead fire management agencies. I guess there was some issues elsewhere in the state where where that communication was difficult or it wasn't seamless. So Tara, do you have any further, you know, info in terms of up here in the North State, whether that's something that's been kind of discussed and and there's a good mechanism for that to happen? Or where are we at on that?
So I have this little, I reached out both internally and we got a really good response from Nick Goulet, who at his governor's wildfire, no wildfire, what are they, task force? There we go. He went to that meeting. And I have a his write-up on what he learned from the state folks. And also a quick little message I got back from some of our fam staff. So Larry, to answer your question, originally when we started going with the the AI approach, we got a lot of false positives, lack of a lot of false alarms. So they've been refining it with the with the change with UC, it's UC San Diego actually having people monitoring it. I think that they're starting to pilot that in another another arena. So but I'll let you go while I try to figure out how to attach the document that I have into the chat, because Zoom is a challenge for for Tara. So let me see what I can do. Go ahead, Larry.
You're on mute, Larry.
I just wanted to correct something. My point wasn't that they missed a fire. My point was actually in Southern California, they caught a fire that way that that they've caught it maybe 15, 20 minutes sooner than they would have caught it because somebody was monitoring the fire cameras and immediately got a hold of the agency. So I was just hoping that we had some sort of communication like that going up here with people monitoring the cameras.
Yeah, so I can uh, let's see, blah, blah, blah. UC San Diego has now created humans at control centers to verify whether the smoke is truly a fire or just a cloud of dust. So we will be having that discussion again, whether we should test drive the automatic alert system. And if you go down to what Nick heard, and I'll again, while we're talking about other things, I'll figure out how to drop this in the chat. He, so the person, this is from Nick. Regarding the wildfire detection capabilities of the wildfire alert camera system, he had the opportunity to attend the California wildfire and forest resilience task force meeting where Cal Fire Director Joe Tyler reported out on the utilization of the camera system for early detection. He noted in his remarks that the alert wildfire system is indeed using AI and computer learning for early detection linked to their emergency response deployment system. He said that they had detected several hundred fires so far. And right now they're deploying the system as a pilot project, I believe in Southern California. That's where they're test driving it, Larry, to see if it's been refined enough and the bugs worked out to to stop reporting dust and and kind of streamline it. So because of the success of that down south, we are starting to have those discussions again back here in the North State. At the time, when it first came out, Cal Fire and the Forest Service had both agreed there were just too many false alarms. And now that it's been refined and there's actually people monitoring it, I think we're going to take another look at it.
Yeah, and we had a situation here on South Fork just last week where there was a lightning strike on top of the ridge and the fire camera caught it, I think, for even the neighbors out there caught it. So
Yeah, it it and I know, you know, we had the the fires there right during the parade or just before the parade in Oregon Mountain. And the cameras definitely the the it's good though, too, we have work. Well, so we have actually picked up those fires as well. So that's an excellent question, Larry, and I think it's something we're going to revisit again this fall to see if if the technology has gotten to the point that we should be utilizing in that manner as well.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other questions on that topic? All right, not seeing any. Up next, we've got
Excuse me, Jim, I just got one more carryover from the last meeting and okay, Kelly, you were going to reach out to Dave Kolbeck about attending given the relationship with the Good Neighbor Authority?
Yeah, I had a discussion with him about that and he is just out this week, so he wasn't
But he's on board for coming in?
Yes.
Great.
Yep.
Okay. Up next, we've got a topic here that surfaced at the rec committee meeting last Friday. So Pat Frost kind of brought to all of our attention that the rack committee is all going to be expiring, all their current, you know, memberships are going to be expiring here shortly. And and the history of reappointments is evidently a challenging one. And a fairly lengthy process. So I think there was consensus amongst the rec committee that maybe some communication to the Secretary of Agriculture was in order to at least bring attention to this. And so I don't know, Carol. Would you like to give a little more kind of background on that? And I know a letter, you know, was sent out to everybody to review that Pat drafted amongst others. So you want to elaborate on that, Carol?
Yeah, so you know, basically, the issue is that all the current rack members terms expire in February of 2025. And in the interim, we don't have a quorum because some of the rack members have resigned. So even if money became available, you know, at the turn of the fiscal year, the rack couldn't turn around quickly and vote to spend that money on Trinity County projects. And then, you know, we lose everyone in February of 2025. So that's one concern is that we would be, money would be coming available and we wouldn't be able to allocate it to Trinity County projects. The second concern was that some people applied to, you know, replace the current resigning members of the rack. It's been like a couple of years. My neighbor has been three years. Amanda applied months ago, and so they don't hear anything back. They don't move forward in the review process. So they get frustrated and then they say, forget it. I don't want to serve on the rack. Obviously, you guys aren't functional. So that's a concern. And then I guess the other concern goes out of my head. But but basically, the idea is that we need to, oh, the other concern is that, you know, it takes Washington, you know, you have to come up with a whole huge packet. They don't want to review just two or three people that are replacing expiring, you know, or resigned members. They want to have a big packet. Even though we've done all the outreach that they want and we've gotten good diverse applicants, they don't want to submit a small package because it does have to go all the way through up to Washington to get vetted and get signed by the Secretary of Agriculture. So we've heard rumblings that perhaps they might be willing to delegate that downward to either the you know, the regional forester or someone like that, even if it's just the chief of the Forest Service, just so it doesn't have to go quite so far up the chain to get someone to sign off on it. So anyway, the letter pretty much is trying to address those concerns that we're going to have a non-functional rack. Especially given the uncertainty of the presidential election, it might, people might be resigning in February and who knows when we would get the appointment signed off on. So we might be losing money that comes to Trinity County. We might be discouraging people from signing up to be rack members because the process is taking so long. And it just seems to make sense that we could somehow streamline the process by moving the sign off somewhere further down the chain. So that's kind of what the letter is trying to capture. And it is very complimentary to the local staff. They've been doing a great job. It's just the overall process that the letter is trying to address.
Ronnie Gray, that last week's last week's meeting had brought up the idea that there had been some internal discussion with the forest about whether or not that that signing off of appointment, you know, could be moved down the chain. So so, yeah, the letter is really meant to sort of encourage that potential or and then and also kind of probably raise awareness of the complications that the current process is is giving, you know, our rack in particular. Jerry?
I think anything to speed up the rack process would be wonderful. I just have one wordsmith on the letter. If you'll check on my copy, it's page two, the second paragraph that begins, we'd recommend.
Yep.
So when you go down and and allow rack members willing to serve and right there I would add in something like willing to serve additional terms. It doesn't really define. I mean, I get the sense of serving, but I think it just needs to be more definitive.
I don't have the letter in front of me. Is it all rack members or just the ones that are
Staff reconsider this limitation and allow rack members willing to serve additional terms. Ability to do so. So I'm just adding the phrase additional terms. I'm suggesting that that be added.
I mean, we're not, we're not limiting it to just the 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 rack members that want to serve additional terms. I think I think in my mind, I read that as being any rack member that is willing to serve.
Right.
Yeah, including additional terms.
Supposed to be new and reupping.
Right. So maybe it could something to the effect of reconsider this limitation.
We'll talk about.
How new and current rack members that are willing to serve the ability to do so. Something like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, Arnold has his hand up. I can make that change.
I think you're on mute, Arnold.
You could just say allow rack members particular or notably including ones that want to serve another term. But you guys can handle it. I want to say I have a few other little things. Most of you know, I'm not a picky person or an uptight person, but I'm reluctant to send something to the Board of Supervisors if it has what I consider to be grammatical oddities. One is in the first line, the Board of Supervisors is a singular. And so the verb should be a singular. And so in the first line, want ought to be wants. It's that's just how it is. It's just the Board of Supervisors is a singular thing. In the third line, Chastet Trinity and Six Rivers are plural, so it should be National Forests. National is capitalized and Forest should have an S on.
I'm sorry, where was that one? On the third one, third line. I'm sorry, where was that one? On the third one, third line, National Forests. Oh, yeah, yeah.
In the second paragraph. In the second paragraph and the second line, the Resource Advisory Committee. Is also singular, and so it should have a singular verb and it should be has instead of have.
You would have made a good editor.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I really don't like to be picky, but, but we don't want the Board of Supervisors thinking we don't know what we're doing because. We do know what we're doing.
Much appreciated.
At least grammatically.
Okay, any other comments, Arnold, on that or any other things?
No, there's coffee on my paper, so there could be some under the coffee, but.
I would eliminate the first phrase of the first line of the first paragraph. First off. I'd just say the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County.
Yeah, I agree.
I got that.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
I appreciate, and so it's a good letter. And it's a needed letter and I'm happy to send the letter and. And I think, you know, if Pat wrote it, I, I, you know, I appreciate them batting it out and. Gee, a few little things just slipped through and so. Let's tweak them before we send them.
Can you read to me the line you just deleted?
Not the entirety of the line. It would just read the two, the Board of Supervisors of Trinity County, and I would recommend instead of wants, I would say would like to. Thank the Department of Agriculture. Is that, would that be an acceptable change?
Sure, or, or thanks you. Board, thanks you. So Carol, the two words were deleted. First off, was the first two letters, two words of the.
Thank you.
Whole, whole letter.
Because I did think it was a good idea to remind. Bill Sack that he's been here at the beginning and the end, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, any other comments or feedback or? Editorial contributions?
Kenneth, I think that's a background language.
Yeah, this.
So, so then this goes from the Collaborative to the Board of Supervisors with the request that it be placed on the agenda.
Right. Presumably they can, they might mess with it a little bit themselves, but. We got the bones.
FYI, Heidi Harris was in attendance at the Rec Committee meeting and so she did support. This effort to, to bring this letter forward and she offered that she would kind of usher, you know, and then kind of facilitate. On behalf of the Collaborative, kind of the conversation with the Board of Supervisors. So she's on board with this.
So, yeah.
This is not a letter from the Collaborative to the Board of Supervisors. This is going out over Rick Lutwiler's signature?
Yes.
So we're now approving his letter?
No, we're requesting that they, that the board put it on their agenda and that they approve it and then send it to the. Secretary.
Correct.
We're approving our advice to the board.
Correct. That's been, I think the protocol is, the Collaborative has followed in, in previous communications and, and. Letters that have been sent out.
This, yeah, so this is a recommendation from the Collaborative that the Board of Supervisors. You know, sign, sign this letter and then, and then push it forward to Bill Sack's office.
Yep. But it does require a vote of the Collaborative to move it forward. So before maybe we go to a vote, are there any final comments, thoughts? I guess one procedural question maybe is who's going to do the final edits and kind of send something back out to?
I can set, I can do the edits that we've discussed today and then connect with. Heidi and she will get it to the CIO and push it forward onto the agenda.
Okay, that seemed like a good approach to everyone.
So does the Collaborative have to issue a piece of paper that. Requests this to happen to the Board of Supervisors? So paper trails are in place?
I, I mean, I, I would think that that could be done just through my email communications when I provide it to Heidi. If that's the will of the Collaborative.
Yeah. I think that's how we've done it in the past.
Yes.
Do I make a motion that we send it to the board as discussed?
All right, we have a motion. Did Carol second that?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any, Larry, you got a question or you just got your hand up?
I'm just voting.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. I, I think we have a unanimous consensus to go forward. I don't see any opposition. So very good. Thank you very much. Okay, I will get that done first thing next week. Okay. All right, up next, we've got our June 14th field trip report. Who wants to? Leave that discussion for us? Any, any feedback from those in attendance?
It was a good field trip. A lot of, a lot of important information. We got to see how the, how the units were marked, got to talk with. Mr. Winter, who was the one who did the marking and laid it out and here is rationale and. See how it played out in the field and I thought it all looked good to me.
Very good. Thank you, Larry.
I, I, you know, I particularly like the Forest Health. Marking, although I will say. Pat and I have been doing some research since the field trip. Because I'm still a little concerned that the emphasis is on pine being the dominant species. And. You know, I, I still think that is a remnant of the foresters being. Educated more about the Sierra than the Klamath Bioregion. Because when we go back and look at the Klamath Bioregion, it's more of a mixed conifer. And so. Pine and Doug fir are pretty much co-dominant species in terms of percentage. You know, I've been looking at the historical records, like, you know, Bowerman Barn was built with Doug fir. The Covington Mill, which milled all those huge beams for. Disney World when it was being built, Disneyland, those were Doug fir. And so. To be at the community forest meeting where they're calling Doug fir weed species is a little upsetting. And so I would just. I would just like to keep doing some homework on. What the forest composition should really be, if it should be predominantly pine. And so anyway, I'm just going to throw that out there. And then the other thing is I do really want to thank Sarah and the Recreation, the NRA for. Considering our comments about the balance of. Forest health needs versus recreation needs in the campground. We did go to Hayward Flat. And I've been back and so has Jerry to look at where they've remarked. The trees. So some of the blue is blacked out. I was there over the holiday weekend and when it was packed and there's still tons of people that use the blue marked trees for their, than their. Clotheslines and, you know, they were really appreciating shade because it was so darn hot. And so I am still concerned that there's too many trees being taken out. Of the campground. But I don't see an alternative path other than what we discussed at the. Field trip, which is to. Do Hayward Flat, see how that goes and then. You know, defer the thinning on the other primary, the most visited campgrounds until we see what Hayward Flat looks like. One of the things we did talk about at the field trip that I don't think is happening is we talked about doing some sort of survey of campers and I think it's kind of too late. We've missed the two major holidays. So that, that's kind of fallen through the cracks.
All right, thank you, Carol. Anything else on the field trip? Arnold?
Still on mute? Arnold, do it, yeah.
I knew that, I knew that, I knew that. I'm on top of it. My sense from presentations we've had over the years and from driving around up there. Is that there were also more. Big hardwoods present in the forest all around. And I think they, they, my sense is that they've been allowed to be shaded out. And so just a note, my opinion is. The forest should not be a pine forest. The forest should not be a pine and fir forest. The, the forest should be a mixed conifer with hardwoods forest. Is my impression.
Agreed.
All right.
So I only commented on the. The Forest Service part, not the NRA part. So the NRA part I thought was also educational and I thought that. Todd, I believe his name is, that gave us the scientific. Explanation for why they wanted to do and, and he, he sort of won me over. I still think, and I recommended this at the time, and I still think. That they should make a pass through first, taking the worst offending trees first. See what that looks like. And then if there's more work that needs to be done, then make a second pass and take more. But I, I. I agree that. I understand why they want to take them and he, he certainly made his point of, of why that would be necessary, but I, I think possibly doing it in stages. Might be a better test of, of how this is going to play out because if you just do it all in one swoop. It's going to be done and then that campground will be how it is for quite a while, quite a few years in the future. And I think it might be way too sunny and bright if they take all the trees they had marked. So that's just my thought.
Okay, Jerry?
I, I think the other compromise or agreement that was made is that. The Hayward Campground would be done before any of the other main use campgrounds would be marked. So we can see the impact of what happened. With such a. A removal of trees.
I think they've already marked Tannery.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, Tannery has been marked. Do Sarah or Tara, do you guys want to talk a little bit about the. Carol's kind of comment about leaning towards the. More towards the pine and the rationale for that?
I wouldn't speak to that. I think Tara could.
Sure, so if, if the Collaborative has the. Impression that we are trying to convert everything to a pine forest, that is, that is not at all what we're trying to do.
But that's what they said. I mean, at the field trip, that's what, that's what Todd was talking about.
So what you, what I heard Todd say was that we have more Doug fir than we've ever had before. You know that Doug fir is a shade tolerant species. Because of the lack of management, we have more trees than we have before. So right now. Just by default, we've created a, a situation where Doug fir is happily, you know, multiplying all the time. So what I, what I believe we want, and I can, I, I will only, I'll speak to Bowerman and kind of the general. Trinity side, actually west side. We want a mixed conifer stand for the most part. There may be pine aggregates where we, where they were traditionally pine, historically pine, and we want to favor the pine. And the reason in general we favor pine is because. They are more resilient to fire. Generally speaking, their branches are up much higher off of the ground. They shed the lower branches as they get bigger. Making them more able to survive a low intensity. Fire, low to moderate, whereas firs often with their branches touching all the way to the ground. You know, they create ladder fuels and, and let a fire get up into the stand. But I will tell you, and Arnold brings up a good point, a lot of places, you don't typically see a lot of oak with a lot of Doug fir, right? Like where we're doing oak woodland restoration. The, the Doug fir is, is out of place in those areas. So it's, it's really hard to, as we do prescriptions, they're not. They're, they're very site specific, right? We know we have Doug fir in elevations. We've never had Doug fir before and that's why you see. The mass die off of Doug fir. And we know that the pine.
The pine, the pine is what's dying off up here.
But if you drive over to Hayfork, you're going to see a bunch of Doug fir. When you look out on the, when you look out on the hillside, you're going to see Doug fir as well. So.
About the North Lake. Area. It's not the same as Hayfork.
So have you been to the other side of the lake, over to Mary Smith? Have you been to those campgrounds and gone through those at all?
Yeah.
And what, you see a bunch of trees that are dead and what species are those ones?
What I see up here is all the pines that die.
And I understand that. And I, so I'm looking to give, to leave, and I think Sarah's in the same place. We want to leave a campground that has. That has the best trees, that are the strongest, that are the most, provide shade. And that'll also be fire resilient and not create a hazard for the communities that are located very close to them. So if you, you shouldn't, you shouldn't hear is a, it's. All the Doug fir's got to go and all the pine's going to stay because that is not, that's not forestry. I think I hit the nail on the head there.
But if you read the scope of work, you know, where it's saying what trees stay preferably, they're listing the pines. They even list pines in the scope of work that don't exist here.
So, so generally when we, when we go to apply a marking prescription, if all things are created equally. And you have to pick between a species, you have a Doug fir that's the same relative size as a pine. We have to, when we go to put the prescription together, we pick, we have to say if all things are equal, which, which species would you prefer? But it doesn't mean that you would cut. That's all things being equal. That's how marking guidelines work, right? So, but if the Doug fir were bigger or healthier or stronger or whatever, you're, we're. We're not looking to eradicate Doug fir, I guess, is probably the best way I could, I could explain it.
I would agree, Tara. I, I think you explained it with a higher level of detail and more accuracy than I ever could. So thank you for doing that. I realize I just pointed that to you. I, where I'm coming from and where we're looking at the campground project specifically. Is the overall tree density, forest health case that Todd Hamilton was making. And I know Todd can get on his soapbox about Doug fir, but I will say he is not a single species. Forester with, you know, every Doug fir in his, in his bullseye. I'm confident in that. He just can get a little. Academic in his discussion and make, and make. Stronger points to, to serve the overall point, which is that we need to reduce the overall density of trees, our forests to improve forest health.
I'm talking about the campgrounds. I was talking about the general forest health prescription.
Okay.
And so maybe we should defer a more detailed conversation until Pat's here because, you know, Pat's been doing a lot of the. The research, looking at what is written in the scope of work, you know, and so forth. And so that's where, you know, maybe the Collaborative. With more foresters here could discuss that later. Because when I talked to, I specifically asked. Keith Greenwood, if you could have a fire resilient Doug fir forest. And he's like, yeah. So I'm, I'm just, and like Pat was on the Weaverville. So I'm, I'm just, and like Pat was on the Weaverville Community Forest Steering Committee or Weaverville Community Forest Field Trip when they were pretty much saying, you know, these Doug firs are weed species. And so I just want to point out that was one of my concerns from the field trip and it should be maybe something we talk about later.
And Carol, I see Randy has her hand up, but I, I, I would never, I do not categorize Doug fir as a weed species. That's, that's Doug fir has its place in the ecosystem. It, it plays a really important role. So that's a really unfortunate turn of phrase. So we switch it to Randy, if that's okay with you guys.
Before we go to Randy, I just wanted to bring everyone's attention. Bob Dussett put a little picture in the, in the chat there and, and a little comment. So Randy, go ahead.
Um, there were a couple of things that occurred to me as I listened to the conversation. And I think that it's important to realize there are Douglas fir dominated stands in the Bowerman area. And they will be thin Douglas fir stands when we're done because there isn't that component of oak or pine out there. And the other piece that I tend to think of about the shade intolerant species is as the forest gets more dense because of our limitations on fire playing its role, we're actually selecting against the pines and the oaks. And I always think as a forester, we want the full representation of all the species in an area, you know, that maintaining that like overall biodiversity is important. So Douglas fir is really important. And in other places, I think white fir does what Douglas fir does here. It's not that we don't like those trees. It's that they're just tending to expand right now. And so management, that like intentional action is trying to bring the ecological forces in line with what are the things that are going to maintain all of our species? So I don't know if that's helpful, but that's how I tend to think of the relative importance of incidental species in a stand or in an area. And then another, the final piece is pines tend to like the slightly less productive sites, you know, maybe they're rockier, maybe the soil's funky. And so thinning in those places that are less productive actually will help future mortality, right? Like if you can thin it now before it dies, as we're seeing with the drought, you know, and I'm seeing the full expression of pines dying in over dense stands and whole hillsides of Douglas fir disappearing in amongst oaks. So there's really a wide expression as you go around the county. But in, where, places where you find concentrations of pine, they're actually suited better to those droughty situations. So they might not be super extensive up where you're at, Carol, but I still think they're an important little ecological niche and represent some of the biodiversity up there. So I, I hope I wasn't geeking out too much, but that's just some thoughts that came from the conversation.
We, we get more rain, you know, up here and all that stuff. We have more moisture. And so we're not seeing some of the drought issues that other people are seeing. So anyway, I just think we're different, a little bit, kind of bit, more likely clameth not than further south.
All right. We got Larry with a hand up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, this is starting to confuse me. There were two sort of distinct field trips wrapped into one. On the first half of the field trip, we were on Bowerman Ridge. And Tara and Mr. Winter were talking about the prescription and everything was, I never heard, I never heard them say anything about pine domination. I just never heard that. Now, the discussion at the campgrounds was completely different discussion and that was where Todd Hamilton took charge and he was doing the narration of what was going on now. I, I do think I heard it there. But I, I certainly didn't hear it on the Bowerman project and, and their mark certainly did not show any kind of preference towards pine in there. So I, I, like I said, I'm a little confused with this discussion.
Well, I was talking to Todd about the mark when we were on the Highway three where the, where we first pulled off on that first part of the field trip before we went over out Bowerman Road. That's where he was.
Right, but he's not in charge of that. That's not his area, right? He's in charge of the campground.
All right. Well, I think we need to bring this one to closure here. Appreciate everyone's input. Maybe this is a topic that we could consider a future conversation more in depth and maybe others who aren't present here today could contribute to that. So again, thank you all for, for getting those concerns out there, but it sounds like we may benefit from further discussion along the lines of Tara.
Yeah, I think, I think that Sarah's unit has the next field trip kind of teed up in that same neck of the woods for August 16th. It will be really critical that the collaborative have their forester, have your foresters, make sure they're there. That, that'll be important, especially with Kenneth back now. I think that'll be helpful. That way we can, we can have a well-rounded forestry discussion, which will likely occur during that field trip.
Good, good. Good, good lead in Tara. So there's a, just a bullet underneath this trip report is field tour schedule update. So as you recall, last meeting, you know, we, we had a fairly robust discussion about kind of field tour scheduling. I believe we did have one, you know, cancellation, however, maybe on the South Fork. So do we want to revisit that kind of longer term kind of field tour scheduling now? And, and are we prepared to kind of discuss kind of more specifics about where we're going here over the next several months? Tara's shaking her head. So you want to, you want to throw something out there for us, Tara?
Yes, I'm, I want to say though, I have it in the notes that I was going to drop into the chat, but I've been checking my verbs while in between things because I'm a little nervous to submit it to Mr. Whitridge and get it, get it back with red pen on it. A little, a little nervous there. But let me, let me go ahead and, and drop that into the chat because I do have the the notes and some, some that I'm going to need here. So I'll look at it at the same time here. All right. Standby. Here's the here are my notes. Be kind. They're just notes. They're very draft.
No judging here.
Yeah. Arnold's going to get his red pen out and he'll figure out how to online grade it. I, I was looking though, I was like, oh yeah, oh yeah, I forgot the S there. Okay. There we go. Let me pull it up so I can see mine. All right. So what I think I need is I need for future field trips, I need a big, I'll just give you the list of places and then we'll work together on the when, okay? So I need Big Ranch, Junction City, Hayfork, Weaverville Field Break. That'll be late in the season. And then the question is if the group, I know that we will be started on some of the pilot service work, cuts, skid and deck. It's more of the fuels related work. So if the group wants to see some of that, once it's been implemented, that should start in early September now. So if you want to go see that, we'd have to squeeze that in as well.
Okay. So do you have some timeframes?
So in my notes, I, I, I generally just had, Big Ranch would be August, so late August. Cause I, I didn't put Sarah's field trip, Sarah's field trip for North Trinity County, I believe is the 16th. Is that right? That's the regular scheduled field trip, correct?
Yep. Yes. So that, that's the NRA North Lake.
Yep. Uh, so, so Big Ranch would be probably that last week in August.
Hey Tara, what, what's the status of Big Ranch right now? Is it all marked out or?
Oh, no, 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 no. I, I, I wish Jerry, no, it's, we should be scoping it in September, which is why I'm trying to, or late August, which is why I'm trying to get you guys back out there and look at some units again before, before I scope it.
Okay.
So, yeah, August 30th Tara for the Big Ranch.
Okay.
The 23rd or the 30th?
Yeah, 23rd or the 30th. So that'd be either a week after, you know, the North Lake or two weeks after.
Let's, the 30th, those Labor Day weekend is where related to the 30th? Is it the next week after that or?
That, that's-
Very close.
That is that weekend.
Yeah, we probably don't want to do that.
Okay, so the 23rd.
Yep, okay.
All right. Junction City's up next.
Uh, so Randy is, the Waterston Center is helping us with that, with that NEPA. Randy, I think I have you guys tentatively written in for a Junction City field trip with the collaborative in September. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that would be great.
So-
So 20th is our regularly scheduled meeting for the September.
And rec committee would be the 13th.
Right. So the 27th?
That sounds okay to me. What about you, Randy?
Sorry about that. The mute button was elusive. Yes, that, could you repeat the day again? I'm sorry.
27th.
September 27th.
That sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, Hayfork.
Um, I could take the next, that should be a field trippy month, right? So I could just punch, pencil in Hayfork for whatever regular field trip day would be there.
That would be the 18th of October.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
So Tara, would that be a review of what's going on on Pilot?
Um, so far we've made it through Junction City as a planning process. The Pilot one would be uh, if we got to get a little further, well, October should be a good time to go look at some work in Pilot. So if you want to have another field trip, we can go to Pilot. Unless you want to try to do Junction City and Pilot on the same day. They're kind of a little far apart, but how do you want to handle that?
Well, we can't do them on the same day.
I don't have a preference.
That's a lot of geography to cover there.
Little bit.
I've had my hand up. I don't want South Fork to get lost in the mix here. Like I see it's not on anybody's list and I know you relinquish control over the Six Rivers, but you know, I we had to cancel it because there wasn't anything to look at, but you know, I don't know what the progress is. Isn't Randy working on that too? So maybe somebody could talk about an ETA for when we got something to look at.
I know Kristen provided some notes. I don't know if, if she addressed that in there. Did she Kelly?
I I need to go and grab that because it's, I don't have it in front of me.
It's okay. I can pull it up. And in the meantime, why don't we combine the Hayfork and Pilot implementation into it? That makes sense.
Yep.
Again, that would be on October 18th, would be Hayfork Pilot. Sure. The only one I have left in addition to the South Fork, Tara, would be the Weaverville Field Break.
Um, what do you think Kelly? Do you want to try to squeeze it in before we're going to get weathered out in November? Or is November going to be okay to? I know we will have, you know, we'll have a general idea of where we're going by then for sure. And probably have a map we can look at and, and some potential treatments and things. Do you want to do that in November?
November would be probably okay, but it would have to be like the first.
Yep. Agreed.
Okay. Because we got the same, we got rec committee on the 8th and full collaborative meeting on the 15th of November. And then the following week, I don't know.
Yeah, the following week is Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving is actually the 28th.
Oh, okay.
So, but that's okay. I think, I think it would be better if it was a little earlier in that month, if that works for people. And then it's two weeks from from Hayfork.
All right. So yeah, November 1st for the Weaverfield Field Break.
And so what I'm getting Larry is probably need to look at mid, mid to early September for South Fork Mountain. So I can, I can pass that along and make sure that's going to work for. So what are our Fridays in September before the 27th Junction City trip?
Well, yeah, it's the rec committee on the 13th and the-
That's right. That one's, that September's hard.
Well, and all of this is subject to the whims of the fire gods, so.
We don't, we don't speak of them Larry that often. We're not on their radar. It's okay.
That's the Friday after Labor Day.
Right. So it's, it's a possibility for, yeah.
For which one?
September 6th would be a possibility for South Fork Mountain.
Let's just put it down. If Kristen needs to change it, she will.
All right. Very good. All right. We got them all. Any more on field trip scheduling? Not seeing any. We ready to move on? Okay, wildfire camera update. So Jerry, you seem to have your finger on the pulse. You want to give us?
Apparently their PG&E is now wanting to install two cameras at every site. So that's six that they're committed to and the two that Digital Path and Travis have been working on. The one on Bald Hill, cameras have been installed. They will be online, I think it's next week. Travis is still waiting to connect with the private company that owns the tower on Horse Mountain. So that's still kind of in, in limbo. PG&E wants all the cameras installed this week. And Digital Path, Kevin Anderson, has been working with Lisa Rend Duncan. Is that the right name? I think that's it, on permits. And I talked with Tara a little earlier this morning, we need to, or Forest Service needs to get the permits out sooner than later because if they come out later, then Kevin's company might bump into snow and not be able to get all the cameras installed by the end of the week. So Tara's working on moving that a little quicker. So and I think that's the latest update as of earlier this week.
Very good. Thank you, Jerry. Anything, Tara, on your end, that you wanted to contribute to that?
I just appreciate, you know, the good communication with Jerry. We'll look at reassigning some people to support that effort to try and get it done sooner. So I appreciate the, the information.
And I left a message for Kevin that you're going to be looking at that Tara. So he's aware of it too.
But thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, are you still having meetings or Zoom meetings or anything with Alert California and Digital Path?
No, not having meetings, just individual conversations and just trying to grease the wheels to move things forward.
Okay, because I'm still, you know, I truly appreciate, you know, the four that are going in. That's awesome. But I'm still trying to figure out how to get the two up our way at Bonanza King and, and Trinity Center. And so I just feel like we're out of the loop.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And I'm also very interested in trying to accomplish one on Ironside down river. So after this flurry of activity, I think then we'll start refocusing on the next step. Okay?
Great. Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's just particularly brought to mind with the Shelley Fire. I've been looking at the Fort Jones cameras to kind of keep an eye on that fire. Mambo Fire, we were trying to find it, but you know. Mambo Fire, we were trying to find it, but you know, um, would have been nice to have a fire, uh, camera on Bonanza King, because Lookout Guy was there because of the extra staffing from Forest Service, which is awesome. But, uh, we don't necessarily always have that, even though he was there because of the lightning. So anyway, cameras would be wonderful. Thank you.
Of course.
All right, again, thank you, Jerry, for moving things forward. Anything else on wildfire camera update? Seeing none, uh, Minersville Boat Ramp. Sarah?
Yeah, I shared this with the rec committee last week, but we have some additional quotes, so I'll, I'll share it again. It's, oh, pretty short. Primarily working with our engineering staff behind the scenes to make sure that the design is reflective of the public comment that we received at the town hall at our, or public meeting we had in February, uh, especially with respect to parking below high water. Uh, simultaneous to that, we are working with the water board to address their key concerns about parking below high water and identify a potential path forward for, for permitting. Since we received a denial letter from them in two thousand eight, we want to make sure and mitigate the different things that they identified as being issues. So that we can move forward and hopefully get to yes from them as opposed to getting another denial letter. So that is all behind the scenes bureaucracy, but it is playing out. We are having back and forth with the contractor. The other factor with the engineering designs is that each stage of the engineering designs needs to be approved by both the Forest Service and also the Department of Boating and Waterways, Division of Boating and Waterways, one of those, I'll get it one of these days. It must, it must be division because they're under the Parks Department, right?
Division.
Thank you. My goodness. Um, so, so that is also playing out in the background too, getting the packet submitted over to them from the engineer. So that is the status that I have for everyone.
Thank you, Sarah. Any, any questions for Sarah on Minersville Boat Ramp? Okay, not seeing any now. I'm seeing a name up there. Marcus, uh, I don't believe you've introduced yourself. Uh, thank you for, uh, joining with us. You want to introduce yourself?
Hello there, I am Marcus Nova. I'm with the Wildfire Crisis Strategy Team. I'm the Implementation Lead. I've met some of you. I've had, uh, intentions of being part of this collaborative, um, as, uh, Ranger Jones has asked me probably, um, two or three months ago and I just could never line it up, but, um, uh, Bob Disset has been somewhat of my, um, my acting, um, and you guys have met Bob. And so, um, I'm delighted to be able to finally join, uh, this meeting. So, um,
Awesome.
Listening, uh, attentively and, uh, it's great to hear all these things happening and all the coordination. So, um, appreciate, uh, the invite and, uh, being able to participate with the meeting today.
All right, thank you for joining us, Marcus.
Yes.
Okay, um, Forest Service update. So we do not have Six Rivers representation, correct?
Correct.
And we did get a report.
We got a report, uh, and I.
Maybe we can send that out.
I will send it out.
So we'll, we'll get the, the Six Rivers report sent out, uh, following the meetings. Everyone has a chance to, uh, get caught up on all things Six Rivers. Okay, NRA, Sarah, what do you have for us?
Well, I think fortunately we covered most of my topics in all of the other discussion that happened today's day, so this should be expedited. A Trinity Camps, uh, was recently sent to the supervisor's office for final review and signature, which is a really great milestone. We did have some delay due to litigation that the Forest Service received on the INYO that affects how we look at categorical exclusions going forward. Um, there's gonna be a renewed sort of review and look at CE's that have multiple categories within them. Um, and that was the case with Trinity Camps because we had the treatments around the campgrounds and then also the treatment at Trinity Center Airport, which was focused on cutting down more trees to meet the FAA compliance, non-compliance issue, um, and flight paths. So because we had those two different kinds of actions, it was two different categories. So we had to go through another round of scrutiny with the regional office before we could move forward with that. That is complete. We have the support to use both categories and keep the airport work with the Trinity Camps document, which is really important to us because we want to expedite that work happening at the airport. Um, that is all good, that is moving forward. Um, North Trinity County, uh, we discussed the field trip planned in August. This will be, I think it's important to note, a pre-scoping field trip. So this is gonna be before any of the documents come out, before we are officially, officially, you know, pu- putting down what the proposed action is. So there's still significant space for dialogue, significant space to shape the direction we go with this. So I don't want the perception to be in any way that we, we've made a decision about what we're doing. This is to get that early and often input. And that is the posture we're gonna take throughout North Trinity County. So.
Very good. And I'm sorry, that is for which project?
We, as North Trinity County Risk Reduction, AKA Highway Three. Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it's hard to get the new name to stick, because everybody knows Highway Three.
Yeah.
But.
Okay.
I- if you think, yeah, Highway Three.
So, so in the Highway Three, North Trinity Communities Risk Reduction Project, um, you're potentially gonna include the cameras at Bonanza King and potentially include the work around the hangars at the Trinity Center Airport, kind of these, you know, offset funky projects?
We are looking at including cameras as part of the proposed action. Um, so the defensible space by the hangars has already been approved by a letter of approval from me under the existing permit. So they have that authorization to move forward and they've had it for a couple of months. But we are gonna include for Trinity Center Airport and also a lot of our other kind of recreation and non-rec special uses, like the Marina, um, is, uh, reauthorization of permits as well as, uh, an allowance for defensible space around those special use authorizations. So we don't want to be in the situation where everybody's wanting to come to us every time they want to do defensible space and we have to wonder if we have NEPA for it. We want to say, hey, all of this infrastructure that we are allowing to be out here is reasonable for that to have some amount of defensible space. So we're gonna analyze it all at once, include that, that will include the airport so that going forward, we have a clear and streamlined process for them to remove trees.
One issue that came up during the Fourth of July was the number of trees at the ballpark, you know, which is your dispersed camping area. Um, Kim's been great about doing the prescribed burn there, but there's way too many trees. So is that something that could be included? Cause we thought if you're gonna try to market the, um, Hayward Flat, um, Timber Sale, you know, potentially combining it with Preacher Meadow and then, um, the ballpark where they, it's easy to take out a bunch of trees there if, if, uh, if somebody wanted to bid on that, but yeah. We just noticed that we, we were out there, Fourth of July, looking for fire, fireworks and those trees could definitely be thinned out.
Thanks, Carol. I wrote that down. I'll take it back to the team.
Okay, we'll see you on the sixteenth.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you, Sarah. Any questions for Sarah? All right, not seeing any. Tara, I think you are up. Shasta Trinity.
Okay, um, so I did drop my update into the, uh, chat, which is, you know, I think I'm, I'm done two, two months in a row, so I'm on a, I'm on a, it's a, it's a habit now.
Good.
All right. So, uh, fire updates, uh, we have been working a ton of extra hours, uh, based on the temperatures, the red flag warnings, Fourth of July holiday, um, we have had, uh, significant additional staffing. Also, uh, thanks for, to Sarah, um, and her folks. We have the Mobi, uh, is it a Mobi? What do they call that? Mob Center has been up and running, which helps us bring additional resources into the North State. Um, and, uh, we've had a bunch of cover resources kind of plugged in everywhere. We're very successful with the fires that we did have. Uh, worked really well with, uh, want to give a shout out to the county fire departments as well as, uh, Cal Fire. Um, we talked briefly about the, the fires on, uh, the Fourth of July, right before the parade. Um, and a lot of, uh, good multi-agency work has been going on. So we've been to the TGU, we've been on the Six Rivers, we've been to the SHU, uh, a lot of support to our, uh, surrounding, um, uh, sister agencies. So that's been, been really good and happy to report out on that. Um, next, I want to let you know kind of our staffing. Uh, super excited about our staffing. Our numbers are up. Uh, Trinity Hotshots, uh, are staffed at twenty-five, um, and increased to six firefighters over last year. Uh, that is the max second carry, so we're excited about hitting that. It allows us to stay fully staffed while still letting our hotshots have a life during the summer. Um, I don't think a hotshot has been to a wedding or a high school reunion in, in, uh, ever. So, uh, bumping our staffing from twenty to twenty-five, um, across the region, and I think even nationally has, is supposed to give those folks a chance to have a little bit of balance. Um, the South Fork Management Unit has four out of their five engines staffed. Um, that's up significantly from, from last year. And the Trinity River Management Unit has five, um, staffed full, full-time, so fully staffed. And then, um, the sixth engine is staffed part-time, um, out of the six engines. So, and helicopter five oh six, our staffing has not yet increased, um, but we expect, uh, similar changes next year. So at the low point last June, um, I, uh, we on the west side of the forest had four out of eleven engines staffed. One on the South Fork, three on the TRMU. So a year later, we have nine and sometimes ten engines staffed. So, um, significant improvements there. Now, they're not, I could get into, they're not all seven day effective, they're not, some of them are five day effective, all of those things, but we're super excited to have at least all those engines staffed. All right. Uh, let's see, uh, reclamation in mid-June, um, our law enforcement officers, uh, did a reclamation project, um, of six sites. They removed three thousand two hundred and eighty-five pounds of infrastructure trash, uh, three point eight one miles of hose. They visited another four sites and verified they had in fact been completely burned up. Um, there are more, um, of those efforts planned for this summer on the west side, again, depending on fire activity. Operationally, mastication is occurring on the Petty John Project through our partner, the Watershed Center. The Petty John Project, AKA, is also known as Texas Spider Timber Sale, will start up on Monday. Um, so I don't want that to be any confusion. The Texas Spider of old that was in South Fork that had a bunch of, every owl in Northern California moved on to that project, that, that, that is not what this is, other than um, we're finishing up that contract with Trinity River and we're using the Petty John Project to, to finish out that contract. So don't, don't get confused on that. Um, it's the Petty John Project that's going to be starting. Um, operations are continuing on, I'll take questions at the end because I can't see, except I'm looking at the list, if anyone has questions. Operations are continuing on the Trinity Service Contract, including fuels reduction, um, within the August complex. So we're happy that's continuing. Gemel is expected to be completed this season, once LPs are lifted, so it'll be a fall, we'll finish it up. Um, we did have our staff out there to review, uh, what we, what we thought we would get when we were done and what we ended up with. So that was a really good time with our, um, our planners and our ID team out there reviewing some completed work. Uh, we've had our cover resources, you know, if they give us cover resources over on the west side, we put them to work brushing roads, so I'm always super excited about that. And then, uh, we're looking to start some general fuels reduction work within the admin site boundaries of Natural Bridge. Uh, we're working with our tribal partners to, to get that started. Um, this work will be small trees, similar to just cleaning up your, your yard, you know, s- small trees, you know, under six inches, some brush, uh, trail work, that kind of thing, just really general stuff. Um, planning, High and Palm is making its way through the process. I wanted to let this group know that Fish and Wildlife Service has been really good for us to work with on this project. It's, uh, things have gone well. Uh, we just are, uh, getting through the last hurdle and that's working through the BA with, uh, nymphs on the coast. Um, we did need some, one also, you know, we needed some last minute surveys related to botany, survey and manage species. And, uh, our crew has actually been, uh, camping out there to try and get those all done in time. So appreciate the hard work by our staff. Barman is working through the specialist reports with, uh, with our partner. Um, we have an in-person meeting scheduled next week. I think it's next week. You know, July's flying by to get things finalized, um, and get it, make sure we're all ready to go. And we appreciate the, the field trip and the review of the mark that all of you made that we discussed earlier. Uh, really appreciate that. Uh, Trinity Camps implementation, uh, we all touched on this earlier. We had some folks out there working with, closely with Sarah's unit to, to block out some of those trees and, and make sure that we're receptive to the feedback that all of you are giving us. Really appreciate Sarah leading out on that. Staffing, we have a critical shortage for us, exists in archaeology. Uh, we did advertise, uh, two details, one even at the twelve level and, uh, didn't get any takers. So we will try again, um, and try to be creative and find some other solutions. Perm hiring is on a pause until next fiscal year. Um, staffing and budget are being evaluated nationally and regionally. Um, except for fire, uh, we will have a new district fire management officer in place, uh, by the end of September to fill in behind Glenn Tingley, who is retiring. Uh, Carol, for you, you're probably aware of this, uh, the thirty-seven and nineteen Y Road, that's the road up, uh, to the trailhead from Coffee Creek. Has a significant washout. Um, engineering's aware and assessing our options. Want to make sure that we don't, well, I will make sure we get staff out to get some barricades up so that no one happens into that hole at night. Uh, we'll get that blocked off. Um, we, oh, we have identified, uh, the forest has identified a need to better track, um, our road maintenance accomplishments on the forest. So that, um, at least annually, uh, we'll be able to share specific information on, uh, road maintenance work that we've accomplished, uh, either in-house, uh, with timber sales or with our partners. So looking forward to be able to give you guys some specifics on that. And then we talked about the field trips. You guys still awake? I turned off. Now I'm not looking at the document. I'll make sure you guys are still with me.
We're here.
Thank you, Tara. Any questions, uh, Jerry, go ahead.
Uh, Tara, I want to ask you about the archaeological, uh, problem. So, um, you, you advertised as a detail and got no takers for it. How long is an archaeological review good for? Before, uh, they can no longer go back in that area to work? So I'm thinking specifically, uh, Garden Gulch, the two thousand fourteen fire. Uh, I know that there was a review probably two or three years ago, they were all over that country. And now I've been told they can't go in and do any work because they don't have an archaeological. So I'm wondering, how long are they good for?
Um, so a couple of things play into that and it's the, the, um, the quality of the records that were, uh, developed during the initial assessment, that's one thing. And then, um, some of our standards have changed and so the survey requirements, there used to be, and don't quote me on this, you used to be able to be more meters apart when you did your surveys than, than you can be now. Also, um, I, I, and Jerry, this, this is something I, I honestly wrestle with, um, pretty much every day. Uh, is, is how to get through this. So I, I get frustrated because arc, arc, arc sites don't get up and move around, right? Uh, tra- tracking owls is hard. Those, those little turkeys move all over the place. But arc sites are kind of in one spot. Um, however, uh, time keeps moving. So things that maybe we didn't have to factor in five years ago, uh, we now have to think about. And I'm so glad Alden Neil turned on his camera because I'm watching him nod his head to make sure I don't get out in left field. Uh, but arc sites and our standards and, uh, have changed. So oftentimes the arc sites are, are, our records are gonna be good enough to allow us to continue to do work. Um, but when the, when the requirements have changed in between, we have to go back and validate. And if our records are not fantastic, it, it can definitely slow things down. So, uh, it's a point of emphasis for, for me on, on my unit to try and do it right, do it once. Um, and not have to, uh, impact implementation. It should just be a death, desk exercise where you verify, yep, this is what was there, um, it's been identified, it's been flagged, um, and, uh, and we're good. But, uh, I will, uh, to Alden, if he has anything to add there, Jerry.
So who makes the determination when to change and what the changes are? Some, you, you said that the previous records aren't so good because it had been, now the requirements have been changed. Who makes those changes? What's the determination?
I believe it's shippo. Um, yes, Alden, this is like taking a test and being able to check your answer when you say it. I believe it's SHPO, um, yes, Alden, this is like taking a test and being able to check your answer when you say it. Um, Alden Neil, if you don't know. And I worked together on the Hat Creek Ranger District when I was a timber sale administrator and Alden Neil was our archaeologist, so. Uh, he has spent a long time trying to make sure I keep myself out of trouble. Um, it's the SHPO, Jerry, the, the requirements, and sometimes our programmatic will get renegotiated, and I think it's in there. Um, and so we have to make sure we're meeting the terms of our programmatic, because without our programmatic. Um, things would go much, 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 much slower, um, as it relates to getting, um, section one oh six clearance.
Yeah, I could just speak to that real quick, you know, we do have protocols and, uh, programmatic agreements with SHPO, and it kind of outlines what we can do without having to go to SHPO and do consultation. On every single project, and, um, so some other programs in the county like TRRP, they don't have a. Uh, programmatic agreement or a protocol, so for every project they do, they have to get SHPO concurrence on their determinations. And it, it literally adds. Months to the process, so we really got to play nice with SHPO, um, and then when, you know, archaeologists are going out into the field. Um, the, you know, they'll say like, we're going to do a new timber sale on this drainage that you just brought up, they pull out the site, they pull out the report and kind of look at like. You know, who did the report, kind of analyze like the quality of what's going out there, look at, you know, the level of surveys that were actually done. You know, right now under our protocol and our programmatic, so for BLM, it's the protocol agreement. Um, we have to do, um, intensive survey protocol, which is less than thirty meters transects across the whole landscape, so. Every, every parcel out there that we do anything on, it has to be thirty-meter transects with an archaeologist. Um, so, you know, back in the nineties, you could be a little looser, maybe fifty, a hundred meters. Um, so you're missing things, so that's what the archaeologist is, you know, looking at in those reports to determine if more. Uh, investigations are needed, and a lot of times, you know, these places were avoided, or you did a hundred-meter transect because it was a brush field. Um, so post-fire, it's really good to get back out there and kind of investigate more, um, if you can, a lot of times people will just do spot checks, so. Just because you have older survey doesn't mean that they have to do a complete new inventory, maybe just, you know, check some locations out. Um, and kind of work that way.
Great.
Thank you, Alden.
For the information.
Yeah, and I will let you know, um, this is a, a hot topic, we're fresh off of our FLT meeting on Wednesday. Um, we are, uh, the Shasta Trinity is trying to get, uh, uh, some paraprofessionals trained. So that we could, it, think of it like having firefighters that you call up to go do. To fight fire, we want to get some paraprofessionals changed, or we have some of our resource staff. Training to go out and work with the archaeologist, uh, to get some surveys done, kind of in, like surge resources, so. Um, it, it is a problem, we're, we're looking for creative solutions to, to tackle it.
Okay, and, uh, just one more before, like, before, while I got you, did you ever get any feedback from that management review that happened? Several months ago, has, have those reports circulated?
Um, we've gotten some general, uh, information, and I'm, um, I, I know you had mentioned it, Jerry, you're, you guys are, are looking to find out. You know, how that went and, and what some of the findings may have been, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Well, thank you.
All right, anything else for Tara? Tara, thank you for your report. Carol, yes.
Just a quick question, I was out on Barman Ridge yesterday for a smoke check, and, um, A, the road is in much better shape than we were out there. On previous field trips when we went all the way out there, so I'm not sure who did that, but, yeah, thank you, and then, um. There was like a convoy of five forest service vehicles, Tim Ritchie and Allison and a bunch of people. I was just curious if anybody knew what they were all out there looking at.
I, I think we had Fish and Wildlife Service out there not too long ago, um. Again, I think they even may have stayed out there, uh, is that, is that right, Sarah? Do you have any information on that?
Oh, gosh. We definitely have had Fish and Wildlife Service out there.
I thought they had a camping trip recently.
Yeah, I think they cut down their camping trip to like a day, but they're doing camping. Oh, maybe they're doing it this week. I'm, I'm not exactly sure, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, so Carol, I can't tell you the specifics of that particular, uh, parade route, you saw our strike team of individuals. But, uh, but we are, we will, gosh. Remember when you never even saw a forest service vehicle, now you can't get rid of us, we're everywhere, we're all over the place.
That's okay, I mean, it was good to talk to Tim, we were looking at a, a satellite hotspot on Feeny Ridge, and so, um, he was able to tell me it was. Not something we need to worry about, so it was a good, good chat, anyway, but I was curious. All right, thank you.
True. Thanks for bringing it up.
Okay, we are going to wrap up the Forest Service reports and move on to BLM, Alden, are you gonna? Give us that, uh, BLM report?
Yes, I'm gonna try.
Very good.
So, um, the big one that you guys all have been probably tracking for a while is the. The NSIP Resource Management Plan Revision that we've been working on forever. Um, our protest period is coming to an end July twenty-second, so that's coming up pretty soon. Um, that's Monday, gosh. So, uh, we only got a few more days, and that will start the. Uh, protest resolution period, which is another thirty days, and then, at that point. We are getting pretty close to the final RMP, so that's great news, I think we're still shooting to have this. Resource Management Plan final by the end of August. Um, so that is wonderful news. And thank you guys for your comments, if you provided any. Um, I'll just give a little update on staffing, uh, we did just bring on a new, um, forester. He started on Monday, um, his name's Jason Schlaughman, he's coming to us from the Forest Service. Uh, down south, uh, he's got a lot of experience with, uh, Good Neighbor Authority agreements. Um, and he's eager to get there and get working on some stuff in Trinity County, um. So that's exciting, unfortunately. Fortunately, unfortunately, uh, Jess is gonna go on a sixty-day detail. Uh, to the state office for the strike team, strike force team. Strike team that does, goes around and does salvage, um, projects, so we'll be losing him for sixty days, hopefully he'll be coming back. With some gained experience, but, uh, been very, very happy with the capacity Jess has brought us, and, you know, the amount of work that we've. Got going in, uh, Trinity County has been great. Um, that kind of leads me to the next thing, Oregon Mountain is wrapping up. Um, my understanding is, uh, everything should be wrapped up sometime next week before he leaves on his detail. If not, uh, Jason will work with the RCD to, uh, facilitate the closeout on that. Um, so other staffing news is that the BLM just, uh, announced the new state director, the permanent hire. Um, it is a old face, but back to us from the Forest Service, Joe Stout, he was the, uh, Associate, uh. State Director is now the permanent. State Director, which I am very excited about, he's a very nice guy. Um, some future projects to think, start thinking about, we are working on some, uh. A forest health thinning on Jennings Ridge, I don't know if that's been brought up before, but. Uh, we are working on preliminary surveys, so, um, wildlife, cultural, and botany on that, so hoping to start working on a. Proposed action of need. Um, pretty soon on that project. Oh, I also didn't mention for our staffing update is our amazing NIPA planner. Um, who has brought so much capacity to our offices also on detail. Um, he will be on a full hundred and twenty-day detail at the state office as the. State Office Planner. Um, which will reduce our abilities, but I think in the long run, uh, we will be fine, we have another planner and. Uh, Natasha Brazil, she'll, uh, really step up, so it's not a major, major loss and. Drop of our capacity. Um. So Jennings Ridge, uh, we're also working with TRRP to finalize Upper Connor Creek and Sawmill, that's really close, just waiting on some. A few last-minute things, hoping that will be done in the next, I don't know, I'm not even going to say anything, hopefully soon. I don't want to jinx it, um. And then if there's any suggestions for. Timber sale projects, you know, I, I want to, Jason's brand new and I want him to kind of. You know, have his own projects, uh, Jennings Ridge was really Jess's project, but he will be. You know, moving it forward when he's gone, but if you guys have any suggestions for BLM Timber Sale projects or Forest Health. Um, type projects, we'd be interested to hear, so. Um. That's it for me, is there questions or comments?
Thank you, Alden, yeah, any questions for Alden? All right, not seeing any Alden, so you're off the hook.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to partner updates. Uh, we've heard quite a bit from our rec committee meeting last week. Anything else, uh, from those who are in attendance at the rec committee meeting last week that we did not, uh. Bring forward here earlier in the meeting? Not seeing any. Kelly, you're up.
Okay. Um. Let Kenneth back in here. Quick, okay, um, I guess first and foremost, I don't think I heard this from Alden, but, um. The Oregon Mountain Timber Sale, um, that we're doing on the Weaverville Community Forest. Uh, i- is nearly completed, I think all the cutting is complete, um. The, uh, and they're just removing, uh, logs and, um, starting to actually put, um, the roads. Back to bed. Um, uh, but that has turned out to be quite a good project, um, it's probably after timber yields. Uh, tax, we'll probably end up netting about. Two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, that will then go into, uh, an account, um, at the BLM for us to use. For doing service work, um, um. Oak woodland restoration, um, some fuels reduction, uh, things of that nature. Um, so that's pretty exciting, are those logs going to the mill? Those, yes, all that, um, I think there was maybe one or two loads of, uh, cedar that were going elsewhere. But they were all bought by Trinity River Lumber Company, and all of that, um, of, of, all of. The bulk of the rest of it was, um, there was some white fir in there, I guess, but largely it was Douglas fir, um. And that sale is looking really good, uh, we anticipate probably having a post-operation, um. Uh, a post-operation's, uh. Uh, field tour, just to have a, a look at, uh, how, how everything went, and then we can discuss, um, that with the, both the. Steering Committee and obviously folks, uh, here would be, um, invited to do that, so we'll let you know when that's scheduled. Um, we just awarded at the Board Directors Meeting for the RCD, uh, two. Significant contracts totaling out almost six hundred thousand dollars that, um, of. Um, Cal Fire Forest Health, um, funding that's going, uh, towards, uh, work that's going to be happening on, uh. Plantations up in the Lake Forest Area. Uh, as well as the Reading Creek, Indian Creek, uh, we're expanding operations on BLM down in that area. Um, uh, one of the contracts went to, um, a company that's out of Southern Oregon, but the other one went to Silvertop. Um, which is a local, uh, local, uh, organization that's really expanded out, um, their operations for doing. Uh, that kind of fuel reduction type work, um, that's the second one that we've awarded to Silvertop this year, so that's. Keeping money in the, in the community, which is great, um, we have four crews currently, four crew. Four, four-person crews working, uh, actively also, um, largely on. Um, I think we're, we've been limited, uh, to the work done on federal land, so we've been doing, um, so that work. Uh, on private lands, um, through our Fire Prevention Grant. Um, so they're actively out there, um, and sweating a lot, uh, in the heat, but, um, getting a lot done. Um, we've also, I wanted to report out that we've partnered with Will Creek Fire Safe Council for a one hundred thousand dollar. Um. Uh, award through PG&E, um, and so we're sort of doing a financial, uh, fiscal sponsorship on that, but. The bulk of that work is being, uh, meted out to local crews through Wolf Creek Fire Safety Council, so that's, um. All work that's happening, um, down in the Sawyer, Hawkins Bar, uh, and, and. Like through, I think, I don't think, maybe some in Burt Ranch area too, so that's. Um, Trinity Village and whatnot, and Suzie Q, I think, so that's pretty exciting. Alden, you have your hand up.
Sorry, I'm trying to find the unmute button, I just wanted to go back and talk about that Rick project, the Reading Indian Creek Fuels Reduction Project that we're partnering on, that's a. A really neat project, we spent a lot of time, the, the resource staff designing that project, that it would be, um. You know, friendly to migratory birds, um, to avoid all the cultural resources and to kind of just. Increase the health of that stand while also, you know, providing fire resiliency to that area out there. It always seems, there's always a fire out there and somehow they just luckily catch it every single time, but it's, it's a really beautiful area out there, so. Um, and just got really incredible habitat for, you know, elk and migratory birds, so we are really excited about that project from the resource staff.
Awesome. Thanks, Alden. Uh, let's see, what else do I have to report out? Um, I guess one big piece of news is that, uh, and I don't think I reported this out last time, but the. Our, our Forest Health, um, Program Manager, uh, is. Her, her partner is, is moving up to Portland area to go to school, so we're, she's going to be going along with him. So we're going to be, and we're actively seeking, um, to replace her so that there's some crossover in training that can happen. Um, that's, uh, she, she'll be with us through, uh, probably mid-November, so we have had plenty of heads up to be able to try to backfill that position. Um, meanwhile, with, uh, the success of. Her program in acquiring CWDG and, uh, funding, uh, through both the Fire Prevention and the Forest Health. Um, um. Solicitations that have happened recently, a cow fire, et cetera, plus all the work that we're doing with our partners like the Forest Service and BLM. Um, we're, we're going to be staffing up, we're seeking, um, hopefully an RPF forester to, um, sort of take over some more of the. Forestry needs that we're being asked, um, you know, to do, uh, increasingly with our partners. Um, so we'll be staffing up a little bit more in that program, um. And so, um, we've recently filled our botany program manager, uh, position. Um, with somebody, uh, who was very excited to move here from Salt Lake City, that her partner's working with the. Watershed Research and Training Center, so they're both gainfully employed, um, and, and, uh, and adapting to their new environment. Which has been, uh, which has been great, um, Allison, uh, Denise, and she's a fantastic, uh, addition to our teams. We're excited about her becoming on, um. And. Oh, another big, I guess, staffing change that's going to be coming up too, is that our GIS Manager, um, Denise Wesley is. Uh, she lives in, uh, Shasta Lake, uh, area, Jones Valley, so she's had a long commute for the last. Four years, um, she has. Um, prioritized, um, mi- minimizing that, that commute time, um, so she's taken a job with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, but we have, um, a couple of options, uh, that we're going to be exploring to replace her, and she's going to be staying on. Uh, as, on a, in a consulting role for the next, uh, through the end of the calendar year, so, um, we're. Uh, we're glad to be able to continue to work with her in that capacity, um, as we're transitioning into, uh, her replacement, so. Um, I think that's the end of my report, unless there's any questions for me. Yes, Carol?
So that's Bethany who's leaving?
Yes, yeah, Bethany, um.
Okay.
Well, and is, is, is gonna be, she, like I said, she'll be with us until November. Uh, till close to the end of this particular season, and, and we have a pretty strong candidate that we'll be getting an interview with. Hopefully within the next two weeks, and if we can get somebody on within the next couple of months, we'll be. Doing well to, to transition that person in while she's still here.
Yeah, okay, well, that's a bummer, um, so then that leads into my question. Yeah. Okay. Well, that's a bummer. Um, so then that leads into my question, which is, do you know the status of, um, potentially, uh, doing the fuel reduction around Hobel dump?
So we're still, uh, I wasn't able, I was backpacking, uh, during the, um, week when we usually have our north, uh, North Coast R C D Collaborative Meeting. So I don't know what the status of the, um, I, I didn't check back in on the status of, uh, the, uh, state coastal conservancy, um, agreement that was needing to be, to be put into place. Um, I think that it's been executed as of last month, but I am not totally certain. Cause I know that they were flying a, a position that was gonna be largely funded with that funding for a, for a forest health coordinator. So I am, I'm assuming that it's in place, um, but we're, we're working towards giving our, uh, I'm, uh, the, the process for identi-, you know, identification and, uh, uh, and authorization of specific projects throughout the region, um, of which that project is our highest broad, uh, you know, priority for, for Trinity County.
Right. Cause Bethany was working on getting it, um, on the schedule for the fuels crew this summer. So, um, I'm just wondering if that's still potentially gonna happen.
I need to follow up with, uh, Humboldt County R C D to see what the status of that is. So I can follow, I can follow up on that.
Yeah. And if you could let me know, that would be great when you get a chance. Thank you.
Yep, I will do that, Carol.
Anything else for Kelly? Any questions, clarifications? All right. Thank you, Kelly. Uh, Randy, are you, uh, prepared to give the Watershed Center a report?
Yes, I'm happy to do that.
Great.
Um, so feels like it's been a very busy field season. Um, I think everybody knows that, uh, Nick was involved with the Northwest Forest Plan, um, kind of update team. Um, and they've concluded their work and made their recommendations. Um, and you know, I'd love to see, sit with him more and hear about how it all went, but it sounded like it was a very positive experience and, um, you know, just really exciting to make those recommendations to the Forest Service for the Northwest Forest Plan. Um, we, uh, another highlight from June, um, as part of the Junction City, um, Fire Resiliency Project. And I know that's not quite the name. There's a risk reduction, uh, piece in the name, but I've taken to just calling it the Junction City Project. Uh, we worked with the Grange there in Junction City and had a community meeting. Um, and then during the Firewise, uh, Board Meeting, uh, hosted by the Fire Safe Council and, um, of course coordinated by, uh, Skylar. Um, we also talked to different landowners about the project. So that was the tour that we were talking about in September. Um, pretty, uh, exciting to have that community meeting and just have a good conversation. Um, the Forest Service was there as well as, um, B L M. Um, so I know, uh, B L M is thinking that it might be on their schedule to do something complimentary on their lands um, in the next, uh, couple of years. So we'll, you know, be working to stay coordinated across the different ownerships, um, or land management agency, excuse me. Um, we finally got our Community Wildfire Defense Grant, grants, uh, executed. Um, there's a standalone grant for High and Palm that complements our forest health grant and, uh, expands the number of landowners we can work with. So that's pretty exciting and we're already, um, kind of far along with the planning on that project. Uh, so we'll be able to seamlessly move into implementation next year when our, um, V T P is, uh, completed. Uh, that's the one that's gonna cover twenty-seven thousand acres, working with Trini Timberlands up there. Um, very happy news, Trini Timberland started implementing on the forest health work that we've been collaborating on along Pelletree Ridge Road. Um, so that initial lower section, um, did have some, uh, commercial, uh, trees that could be removed. They were variously, um, hazards and, um, problematic in terms of just keeping that road open when the weather's not so great. Um, so they did a small, uh, timber sale. Um, and we've been doing, uh, handwork and chipping, um, to complete that hundred and five acre area. Uh, another part of the C W D G is there's a middle Trinity effort and, um, so we're very excited to work with, um, Corral Creek and S P I along Democrat Ridge, which is the next ridge over um, from Timber Ridge. And there was a contingency line put up there during the monument fire. Um, so you know, we want to clean that up and, uh, work with our, uh, partners on, uh, also implementing a shaded fuel break. Um, as part of that middle Trinity project, there's, um, prescribed fire and there's a portion that the R C D will be taking on as part of the effort. Um, and the, um, Weaverville Fire Department, you know, the work that they do for private landowners is also gonna receive funding for, from this C W D G. Um, yeah, we've just been going like mad with all the fuel reduction projects. I keep thinking I should probably just write this down for everybody cause it's too much to cover in a reasonable time period. Um, but we were able to bring, um, to a close, uh, storm cleanup project down river that we've been working with the R C D on. Um, and Humboldt County and Cow Fire. Uh, so that extended some of our work along South Fork Road. And we also had landowners around Sawyer. And in the next, um, weeks here, uh, will be uh, executing a contract with the R C D that will, um, allow us to continue our work, um, along South Fork Road. That was part of the Greater Willow Creek C W D G that, um, they fortunately got executed theirs before ours. So they're doing some really good work out there. Um, we also, a fun little project, um, we, uh, have been thinking that it would be nice if our community chipping was a little bit more effective, um, we getting to the Mung part of our community. So, um, some of the outreach funding that we have, we were able to translate our chipping, our yearly chipping flyer, um, into Mung and we'll be sharing that with the Fire Safe Council. Um, but it seemed like it was a, you know, important part of some of the neighborhoods that we do chipping in, um, around Hay Fork and out towards Wildwood and, um, Post Mountain. So I'm, I'm really kind of excited. Uh, Sophia Sadie, who works with the Willow Creek Fire Safe Council, also works part-time for the, um, Watershed Center. So she kind of took that on as a project and really excited to have that come out, um, and improve our outreach. So yeah, that, I think those are the big ticket items. Thank you for the time, um, to discuss our, uh, work. Any questions are welcome.
Yeah. Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy? All right. Well, a lot going on. So appreciate everyone's, uh, contributions today and kind of bringing us all up to speed on all that good stuff and good activity. So, uh, with that, we will move to concluding business. I think we've, uh, hit on the August sixteenth, uh, field tour. Anything else, Sarah, that you wanna share? Well, specific tour or not?
Uh, we'll, we'll be getting an agenda out to folks the week prior. So expect for Jim and Kelly for you guys to see that.
Good. Great. Very good. Okay. So yeah, more, more details to follow on that. Agenda building, any, anything, uh, anyone has that they'd like to see on, uh, next meeting's agenda? As always, we will pour through the minutes and, uh, see if there's any, anything that we've covered today, uh, that, you know, would make sense to, uh, follow up with on the next agenda, but didn't look like any things uh, coming up there. So we'll get something out a week ahead of time, as requested. Okay. Well, uh, with that, that concludes our agenda. Is there anything else on anybody's mind that, uh, they would like to share for the good of the order? Not seeing any? Well, gosh, we are wrapping up right about noon. So again, thank you all for your participation, contributions today. Enjoy the beautiful day out there and have a great weekend.
Thank you, everyone.
Officially adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.